So that way, um, if you have any thoughts, um, this is the perfect time. And this is like returning from recess, okay? Well, give him one more minute. Mr. Kamali, when, um, for the, uh, for the budget resolution, um, I, I want you, um, we'll read through it and just highlight like the, the changes that were made from the one, okay?
We'll do.
Read the big numbers, not the little numbers in between, okay?
Yes.
And we'll read, um, the, the tax as well and af- after today, our career day, my voice is like in and out. This is why, this is why I'm not a singer. Burning so much, but it was a, it's always a good experience.
You'd be a lovely singer, Selena.
I know, I've been singing, but my, my voice only holds for so long, right? On my, on my visiting gigs to the schools, all right, Lucas here, right on time. All right, thank you so much. Jared, this is like your, your first full completely, um, vice mayor, um, agenda, okay? Okay, so I'd like to call this a meeting, uh, to order, uh, for Thursday, May 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. This is a virtual meeting and this is a recess from last Tuesday meeting. I'll start with Valerie.
Yeah.
Jared?
I'm here.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
Luke?
Here.
And myself, we have a full, we have a full council, that is so great. Five of us are here in a counter for, thank you guys so much. Um, so next item on the agenda, review of the agenda, council, please take a look at the agenda. And if you see any, um, revisions that need to take place, uh, please, um, let us know, um. The only thing I'm gonna ask is where it says adoption of ordinance, can we put discussion and adoption? So, um, Melissa, make it, um, anytime we have an ordinance in front, um, make sure that a discussion takes, uh, is on it as well. So that was clear that we're discussing and adopting, okay? Thank you, Melissa. Um, yeah, Melissa's like fast, yeah, Melissa, I blink and it's there. For a minute there, I'm gonna think that it was there all along. Thank you, uh, council, um, any other feedback regarding, um, regarding the agenda? Hearing none, um, can I have, um, a motion to adopt the agenda as, uh, as edited?
So moved.
It's been probably moved, can we have second?
Seconded.
It's been properly second, um, any discussion? Any objection, abstention? Hearing none, uh, we are adopting this, um, agenda unanimously. Thank you guys so much. Okay, so Jared, um, go ahead and do a read through of the agenda, please, as vice mayor.
Yep, thank you. Excuse me, guys, those apologies, I'm a little under the weather, so.
You've been singing too?
What's up?
You've been singing as well?
I, I, I wish. Sorry, I'm gonna be a, a little bit slower as I, as I, um, try to get my throat wet. Number one, um, call to order. Number two, review of the agenda, uh, the mayor and council review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, discussion and adoption of ordinance, number four, 2022, and ordinance establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year 2023. Excuse me, sorry, beginning July 1st, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2023. The mayor and council will discuss and adopt ordinance number four dash 2022. I'm sorry, guys, uh, number four, proposal to go into closed session according to the annotated code of Maryland. The mayor and city council of the city of Mount Rainier have the statutory authority to close a session under general provisions, article three dash 305B, for the reasons of subsection 171, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, does discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Or seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Uh, the mayor and council proposed to go into closed session on Thursday, May, I'm sorry, May 12th, 2022, to discuss personnel and consult the city attorney to obtain legal advice. And then number five, uh, adjournment.
Thank you so much, Jared, aren't we glad we have virtual calling, right? That would be cuffing and puff, you know.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you guys want me to say room with me, so right now.
I, I'm suffering from allergies, I barely survived the school today. All right, so thank you so much, you have heard our reading of the agenda at this moment, uh, that we want to hit adopt. I'm moving on to item number three, discussion adoption ordinance 04 dash 2022, and ordinance establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget, and appropriating funds for fiscal year 2023, beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023. The mayor and council will discuss and adopt ordinance 04 dash 2022. And this is the second reading and is up for vote, I wanna make sure that's clear. Mr. Melissa, can you go to the ordinance, please? Okay, Mr. Kamali, um, as we discussed as the meeting, uh, was, was starting, uh, the tax rate and then the, the, the big bullet points, uh, on it and if anything changed and then, um, that's it, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
All right. Hello, mayor and council, so the tax rate, section one is gonna be real property tax. Mayor and council reduced the, the tax from point seven nine to point seven six per hundred dollars of assessed by relation for fiscal year 2023, beginning July 2023. My power was gone, I'm sorry. The second paragraph is gonna be tax rate, which for the townhouse and residential, which was reduced to point seven six for every hundred dollars assessed value. Then we go to the next section, which is the multifamily residential real property, which is stays the same as last year, point eighty-six per hundred dollars of assessed value. The next one is gonna be for the commercial real property, which this one stays at the same rate, point seven nine per hundred dollars assessed value. The next one will be industrial, which is the same as last year, FY 22, point seven nine per hundred dollars. The next one is vacant property, two point five per hundred dollars assessed value. The next one will be business, business personal property, which is stays the same, point nine nine. And the last one will be railroad and the public utilities, it stays two point seven five per hundred dollars. All right, now we go to section four, whi- which we have the general fund revenue FY 23. That would be, the total would be eleven million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-nine point eight seven. This one including three point five five one, point nine forty, point sixty-seven grants, so the total budget, the, the revenue including the grant is gonna be eleven million, three hundred eighty-nine, five thirty-nine point eighty-seven. Section five, which is the general expenditures for the entire, uh, city, is going to be eleven million, three hundred eighty-nine, nine thousand, five hundred thirty-nine point eighty-seven for FY 23, including the grant expenses, which is three point five million. And we go to section six, we have all the expenditure for each department, as you see it, starting from the city government all the way to the contingency. Last time, the mayor and council requested to fix, there was a little tweak that we had to do at the city hall. Now the new number for the city hall is going to be three millions, seven hundred sixty-four thousand, nine seventy-six point twenty-five. The total budget for the department, all the departments is going to be eleven million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-nine point eighty-seven. Now we go to the section, the last section, which is the total full employment, employees for the FY 23. We have the same number as the last year, forty-six FY 23, we're gonna have forty-six full-time employees.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali, so Melissa, go to the tax one, right there, stop. So to clarify, that is per assessed value, um, and also, um, you guys heard the horn, you know, so that, none of that was changed, that was agree, uh, in open meeting, quite a few, quite a few meetings ago, so that, um, it'll all stays. Uh, move it up, I guess, to, to get to the, the bottom part. Keep going. All right, so Mr. Kamali read every single one of those line items, um, all right, thank you so much. All right, council, I'm gonna open up the floor, uh, to you, um, comments, uh, discussion, um, I'd like to hear from you. So this is the second reading, like I mentioned, and is up for, um, for vote tonight. Um, I'm gonna start with, uh, war one, Jimmy, Luke, go ahead.
I have nothing new to add, we, we talked about this in the last session.
Perfect, thank you, Jimmy, Luke?
Um, sorry, I got two kids at home with me right now, um, so I, what was changed then between last meeting and this meeting? Can you, is it the, is it the bottom line figures?
Yes, uh, the number of expenditure for the city hall, because we had a director of finance and the senior accountant listed in the wage and salaries, so we, uh, now this year for FY 23, we outsourced that and, uh, by doing this, the expenditure is gonna be reduced, so we reduce the number by forty-six thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, Ron? That's correct, Ron?
Ron Wilson?
Um, Kamali, it was sixty-four thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixty-four thousand.
Yes.
Perfect.
So it was, so it was sixty-four thousand dollars savings?
Savings plus, yes.
Yeah, and then where did that money go, did that money just go into the contingency?
Yes, the last item, which is the contingency, that is two hundred eighty-two thousand, seven oh two point one three.
Perfect, okay, I am good to go, I appreciate all that work. I think that mayor and council, that contingency will be really nice to have, especially considering some of the work that residents wanted around traffic calming devices, it'll be good to have that money there. And I think as Selena, sorry that there are kids in the background, um, I think that as, uh, sorry, um, I think that as, uh, Selena knows, you know, every year we have something come up that we didn't expect and, so it's good to have that money, thanks.
Thank you so much, Luke, and yeah, never apologize for having kids in the background. I have, I have a child and I told all the team, it's like, kids are welcome, I just spent, uh, the whole day with various classes in Mount Rainier, um, and it's good, you know, you'll be surprised how much of the information that you say they, they, they catch. Sometimes I think that my child's distracted and she's asking me a bunch of questions after. So you're good, don't even stress over it, okay, perfect, Luke, thank you so much, um, Valerie? And then Jared?
Um, thank you, um, Mr. Kamali for making those changes, um, I think that I, like I said before, I think the budget, um, looks good. The only thing I will note again is that I think we should consider in the future, looking at the economic development department, because it's only one person. Um, and I think we can, um, um, you know, expand that potentially in the future, so that's just something I would say, but I think other than that, I'm, I'm good with this as it is.
Thank you so much, Valerie, Jared?
Um, no, thanks, and, uh, yeah, Luke and Selena never apologize for, or, or Valerie, kids in the background, it makes, uh, I did not have them, but it always, it always brings a smile to my face, um, hearing, uh, hearing and seeing your, your little ones, so, um, a lot of the benefit without all the work, so, um, yeah, no, I, thank you for, Mr. Kamali, I know we're having this, um, this session just because of the, uh, the minor tweak we needed to make. Um, so I'm, uh, yep, very much, uh, on board and thank folks for a long, um, deliberative process that started earlier, uh, much earlier this year, and we've had a number of meetings on, um, and again, just, you know, thank you to you, all your entire run, all your entire staff putting together, uh, you know, first, your first budget, but a thorough, um, thoughtful, uh, well thought out, well constructed, um, and, uh, and, um, you know, well laid out budget. I, you know, first year as a full council member, um, and seeing this before me and I, I felt, uh, I felt very well informed and very well supported through this process, so, uh, thank you very much again.
Thank you so much, Jared, so Mr. Kamali, uh, thank you for putting this together, um. Uh, I think that sometimes people don't realize it's a longer process, because by the time we take the schedule out in November, talks have been happening to try to get those dates put together from your team and all of your departments working together to be able to recreate, um, this budget. Um, for next year, like I've discussed, uh, discussed with you and, and council as well, I want us to be able to start adopting a budget that has three years projected ahead of us. So that way, uh, we are conscious of how we are spending, but at the same time, we're able to see like in, um, as much as real time, um, as there is, right? How are decisions that we're making are affecting the long run, if we're leasing a car, if we're making repairs, right? So if we know that in year, um, you know, in FY 26, right? Um, funding is gonna be different, because it's the last year for ARPA, right? Or a vehicle needs to be leased or purchased, that's something that we could already like, you know, start putting, um, effort towards, so that way, it becomes an easier process, but also allows to see the past years, the current one and the future one, so that's gonna be, um, it's gonna be, um, an interesting concept, many cities have it, and I think it definitely will give us a lot more strength and, and, um, it will definitely help with like any pre-planning and, and future goals that we have, because we do have the green initiative goal of by 2035, so we also need to start looking to what that looks like, um, in the city side to be able to build and also, um, our buildings, but also an overall like lay of like, you know, once we do the strategic study, right? This is what every year will look like when it comes to putting, uh, funding aside for the various projects, and we could tie it all together, um, to, to our, you know, a bigger master plan, whether it's the bike, whether it's like, you know, the green, I mean, we have various plans, so that will tie it all together to make sure we're making decisions then. And that will also allow the residents to see like what steps are coming in, so this, you know, X, M, N, O streets and, um, this year, next year, this and that, and how the funding is, you know, already, um, thought out through, so that would make life easier. But, uh, thank you to the whole entire team, I know you guys were working, um, for all those late hours for the Saturday hearings, right, that was a full day, thank you council for also coming in, um. I know that, um, it was, it was a lot, it's sometimes, it's, uh, definitely a lot to us for all of us and, um, you have step up to the plate and, and, um, I'm happy to be part of this team. All right, so thank you guys so much, all right, council, um, hearing that, uh, does anybody needs to go to a second round, because I think you guys are good at staying at peace, correct? Am I reading this correctly, if not, let me know.
Let me just make.
Go, go ahead, Jimmy.
Just, uh, one comment, in the last few days, we've got a couple of, uh, emails regarding money, cash money and, uh, for different, uh, things and, uh, and, you know, I, I know that we put this out, you know, to a lot of people and how much we had to budget, and, uh, we can still do, uh, budget amendments after this is passed. So I just want people to know the, the end all of, you know, how much money we're gonna be spending over the next year. That's all, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jimmy, for that, and, um, I'm gonna look at the chat. Um, okay, so I'm gonna open up the, for to the community, we do have a, a Facebook comment from Mayor Melinda Miles, uh, Mayor Sinabinitas, the fire budget is way overdue and thank you for continuing to prepare a multi-year budget. Uh, thank you, Mayor Miles, I know me and you have very much eye to eye when, you know, about that, I think now we're in a position to, um, to make sure we, we follow through on that one as well, so, um, I, I know it's been ma- many years in the making, but we're hoping to deliver that for next year, so thank you for that. So members of the community, if you'd like to speak on this item, please type your name on the chat, uh, full name, block and street number, so it's an example, if you live on Forty-first Street, you know, the 300 block of Forty-first Street, that'll be what you will type, okay? Um, um, MRTV, Jared, um, any more comments on Facebook?
I can't get to it.
Um, hold, hold on. Um, okay, so I'm gonna read, uh, thank you for the comment on Facebook, MRTV says, uh, I'm also late making a comment on the budget, but would like to suggest that the budget have additional funds added to the budget for the bike coop. The coop, uh, needs a roof and a lot of outside work done, and I believe the ARPA funds can be used for infrastructure. Uh, yeah, Mayor Miles, I think that's one of the things that we are, um, we're definitely discussing, um, on how to utilize, uh, for, you know, making sure that, um, our city buildings and facilities are in, um, a hundred percent in working order, to make sure that, um, we're doing everything we can to get him, uh, where sad in the bike coop, but definitely one of, one of the things that we had, um, we have discussed, so more talks on that one and a hundred percent it should be able to fit. So thank you for that. Okay, so moving on to Tony George, 3311 Rhode Island Avenue. Um, Tony, the floor is yours, you have three minutes to, um, speak, um, so, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, I wanted to, um, let, uh, Mayor Miles, former Mayor Miles did, uh, mention the bike coop, as I, I did wanna, uh, address that. Um, there is, uh, issue with the roof, that, you know, it's an older building, uh, we've got at the inside, you know, plumbing, electrical is all new, up to date, um, however, you know, we did patch, do some patchwork on the roof, because we didn't, you know, really have the resources at the time to, to address the roof. Um, but that definitely needs to go into consideration, and if we do have the art money, you know, hopefully we can take advantage of it and it will fall under infrastructure to, uh, you know, deal with the roof, the, the siding in terms of the, the house, house as well. You know, there's still money in the budget that we haven't tapped into, to do as much as we can in terms of the exterior renovation out back. So I will be in contact with you in the next week or so to, to make plans and set dates to, you know, uh, begin, um, that, that, that renovation process out back, as well as, you know, looking forward in terms of the roof, uh, and, and additional funding that would be needed for that.
Perfect, thank you so much, Tony, thank you for also like the, the work we did, um, with, um, our friends' union to, um, you know, in, in collaborations that come with, uh, Mayor Miles, okay, so.
But can I ask you a quick question also?
Let me, let me, I was gonna say, I was actually gonna say, like, you know, I would definitely think a meeting between the bike coop liaison, uh, from council and, um, and, and us, yeah, will be ideal and we could put that in the books, okay, go, go, Tony.
Okay, I just wanted, I had a question, I noticed that on the new scholarship, uh, flyer, that there's gonna be art money used for that as well, so the, the potential scholarship fund is going to increase. I know from this last cycle, we had six applicants and, um, one, one of scholarship wasn't awarded, I'm wondering what happens to that money, is it reallocated if it's not used in the fiscal year?
That money goes, any money that's not used, um, it goes into our reserves, yeah. Uh, so basically the budget is drawn and. Uh, so basically the budget is drawn and our team does a good job of trying to stay as low as they can under the allocated fund. So that way we will have, um, money in case of a rainy day. So yeah, so the, I'll tell you this. So the line items that you see in the budget are, are there. But our team works very hard to find, uh, ways to, um, to reduce the cost so that we were able to, um, we're able to like save in the long run. Yeah.
And just the last thing is in terms of the ARP funding, I noticed that the twenty seven, the two point seven million is, is allocated, but it's just one line item. I know that there were public meetings to get feedback from residents. So I'm wondering in terms of that ARP funding, i- if anything that's been committed or potentially committed, if there can be a breakdown in the budget to, to include those line items?
So it would not be a breakdown in the budget. Um, so most committed, but the thing is like it hasn't been spent. So there are, there's a whole document. So we basically touch ARPA in every single meeting. So I will say in the next meeting, even if, um, Luke, when was the last meeting that Doc was produced? Was it a meeting or two ago?
It was April. April fifteen, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so it's two different things. Uh, Tony, the way it's allocated in the budget because, um, we're still working on, on how that's going to be spent. So most of the money, even if it has been allocated, has not been spent. And also at the same time, um, we're still going through the process. So it's, it's two different, uh, two different things. That's when the budget is, is shows under ARPA. And on a different document, it shows like line item by line item and even like, you know, um, some of the location that's already, that's already happened. And as many has been, uh, business assistant, uh, food, correct, that the baskets that we did. Um, uh, what's it called? Um, there's money right now allocated for, uh, both schools, uh, for an outdoor, uh, classroom. But that's still in the process of being given. So most of the money, um, how do you call it? Um, it's still in process to be given. So it's not, that's the reason why it's there. Okay?
So is it possible for that?
That's three minutes already. Actually, I'm getting, I'm getting the, my, my phone highlighted. It's, it's been more than three minutes. We usually allow for three minutes. So I would say like Jared typed that he's your bike liaison. So me, you and him, or whoever wants to go, could go visit the bike coop. We could arrange a meeting. And then, um, have a brief, uh, you know, like, uh, walkthrough and we could do that offline. Okay? And, um, and we could send you the link. I could send you the link, how do you call it, to, um, to the ARPA, um, um, expenditure, um, approvals that we have done, um, so far. Okay?
I'd appreciate that.
Website as well, right, Mr. Kamali? The, some of the signatures are in the website as well.
Yes, yes. And if she needs any more information, I'll be glad to provide it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. So moving on to next, so, um, if anybody cannot, um, for whatever reason, cannot type their name in the chat, first I'm going to go with the people from the chat, the people from the Facebook and I'll come back, um, if there's somebody that cannot access, uh, the comment either one or the other. So to, um, to point this out, so Jared is the liaison to the bike coop. Um, so thank you so much for putting that information, uh, right there. Let me see. Um, thank you, um, Melinda for your feedback from, uh, Jared. Uh, Sharnette, I would like to know if Richardson Park can be available for Juneteenth celebration. Also, can any of the contingency funds be used for that event? Also, I mean, be located. Also, well, actually, Sharnette, you're here. Do you want to go ahead and use your three minutes? Do you want me to read through it? Sharnette?
Okay, um, I, I hope that you're able to hear me.
We could hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay. So, yeah, I, um, I submitted for Juneteenth funding and also for overall, based on a meeting that, uh, we had on Juneteenth, to have additional money, uh, uh, placed as a line item in the budget for, um, different programs throughout the year, uh, diversity and, and just different types of programs that I think would be, uh, uh, really good to have in, uh, the community. Not just for Juneteenth, but there are a variety of things. And we did speak about that during the, um, the Juneteenth meeting. Uh, right now, we are waiting for, um, Tim to get back with us in reference to using the school yard, which is what we want to do. But I'm still looking for some alternate locations just in case. So I am asking if, if it comes down to it, can we use Richardson Park? Can we use any park? I just want to make sure that we're able to do this. We did get twenty-five hundred dollars from the, um, Recreation Committee, but that is a reimbursable grant. So you still have to come up with quite a bit of money uh, in the forefront. So I did submit a letter to Council. Uh, and I, uh, you all received it. I'm hoping that there can be an amendment done that would, uh, provide funding for events such as, uh, Juneteenth. And also, um, if contingency funds can be used. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I have kids in the background also. Thank you.
That, that's fine. Kids are welcome, even if we are like in, in person. Uh, thank you, Sharnette, for, for your feedback. Uh, contingency money is only used in case of an emergency. And by an emergency, I'm, I mean like, um, uh, when public work, uh, got flo- uh, floated, right? Uh, when the January went down, kind of those things. So we're still not out of the woodwork. Um, we're hoping nothing happens between here and June thirtieth, but that's, um, some of the funding is utilized, uh, for, in case of an emergency. Uh, the email you're referring to, I wasn't copy on it. So, um, I can't say, uh, much. It got forward to me, but, uh, a couple of the events that mentioned there, they already funded through the city budget. Okay, uh, some, uh, it's one of the council members, Mr. Kamali, trying to speak. My apology. I'm hearing somebody, but I don't know who it is.
It's not me.
Um, this is, this is Luke. And I can just say one thing. You know, Sharnette, the Recreation Committee has six thousand dollars in funding for programming. So if you wanted to volunteer to be on the Recreation Committee, you know, that's a lot of money and, and that, the, all the programming you described is exactly the purpose of the Recreation Committee. So, um, you know, you can, you can get on there and, 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 and do work there. Um, and that's, that's, that's open for nominations, I would assume. I doubt we have a fill. I could be wrong.
It's, it's, well, so far, I think it's the, we have a full board. I think I will have to ask the Chair. But, um, residents are welcome to any of the committee meetings. With the exception of certain sections, like, you know, whether board elections meeting for a specific, very close, um, uh, details, right? But overall, like all the committees are open to the community. Okay. All right. Perfect. Um, let me read through the chat and let me see if any, um, if Facebook has anything else, um, anything else to add. All right, let me see. All right. Sorry, Jared. I read your message. Um, regarding the, the parks, Sharnette, um, most of the parks are not our park, the city parks. And, um, so that's like going to be a county thing. Um, is, is, I don't know what the magnitude of the, the event is. Richardson Park is ours, but, um, as we mentioned, uh, ferry, uh, what's it called? Um, the twentieth is the federal holiday and our staff is, um, not here. So that, um, that might create a problem, um, that might create a big problem for the day. But the county, the county, uh, parks, you have to ask, you have to ask the county. We don't have, um, we don't have jurisdiction of, um, um, whether you could use them or not. Same like as the Nature Center, it is closed. I did call, um, I figured it was going to be closed, but yeah. They're, um, they, they, they do their own permitting and stuff like that. If it's going to be a major event and, and they decide what, um, liability insurance or not, they're going to require, or if you just like do it impromptu, um, Richardson Park is relatively, um, definitely a lot smaller than the Nature Center, but in the other county parks. Um, we don't, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of, uh, green, big green, green open space that belongs to the city. It's very limited.
Um, Mayor, there is the food forest and, you know, we wouldn't need, there's no need for city staff, Sharnette. If you wanted to do something at a city park, I think you could do it. You wouldn't need, I don't think we need city staff there.
Well, I forgot about the food forest, sorry.
Yep.
It's so educational teaching that I sometimes forget how big it is. Although it's not, although I'm not incorrect, it's not the city's, it's on lease for the city. So. All right, perfect. So look into that one. All right. So, um, any other questions or comments regarding the budget? Uh, Facebook is, uh, clear, uh, Jared? Okay, so, uh, Mayor Melinda Miles, uh, put, uh, Morris, MNCCPC parks are first come, first served. Yeah, correct. So that's like, that's your own thing unless that, unless, I guess, unless you're doing something mega big that's. But yeah, first come, first served. So you're going to have to, um, um, work on that one. Thank you, Mayor Miles. All right, perfect. Uh, Council, anything else on the budget? Okay, uh, chat. Is there anybody on the phone who would like to speak, who didn't have a chance to, um, to speak or type their name on the chat? The floor is open to you right now. Okay, so saying, uh, that, um, I am going to call for the vote for the budget. Is there a motion on the floor to approve ordinance, um, oops, sorry? Ordinance, um, keep with the title down. I'm pretty sure it's all four twenty-two. Yeah, not bad. All four twenty-two?
So moved?
Any second?
Seconded.
Perfect. Is it moved and second? Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm actually going to call your name for you to vote on the budget. So that was some record of one by one. Okay, uh, Jared?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
And, um, I as mayor vote, yes. So the FY twenty-three, uh, budget, um, appropriations fund, okay, maybe I should go back. The art establishing the tax rates of the national budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, beginning July first, twenty twenty-two to ending July thirty, twenty twenty-three has officially passed unanimously. So ladies and gentlemen, we have a budget for FY twenty-three. I know. Don't be jumping, enjoy. Okay, thank you guys so much. Can you go back to the agenda, Melissa? Okay, so just to point now, now the heart, the additional work, uh, starts for the staff as they're, um, you know, we have an adopted budget, but they have to start working on consolidating for the end of the year. So we're already in May. That's the reason why it's important to try to pass the budget now. So that way the staff could start working on the consolidating the accounts. Uh, they do this like, you know, in a month to May basis, but they also want to make sure that, um, they come to Mayor and Council to let us know that, uh, the budget is balanced out and, um, and figure out where we're at, um, with any, um, with all the bills paid and, um, and money put towards the reserves. All right, perfect. So moving on to item number four. Propo-, um, oh, Vice Mayor, how can I not say no to you, right? Uh, proposal to go into closed session according to the annotated code of Maryland, the Maryland City Council of the City of Mariner, Maryland, um, have the statutory authority to close the session under general provisions, Article three dash three oh five B for the reasons of subsection one and seven. Reason number one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction. Any other person or matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Um, number seven, to consult with Council to obtain, um, to obtain advice. The Mayor and City Council, uh, will, uh, propose to go into closed session on Thursday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-two to escort personnel and consult with the city attorney to obtain legal advice. So Council, I need a motion on the floor to go to closed session for, uh, three oh five B, subsection one and two. Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is it properly moved and second? Any discussion? Any objection? Abstention? Okay, so, um, Council, we are officially going into closed session and, um, thank you residents so much. On our next meeting, we'll report back from our closed session. Um, and as Vice Mayor, um, Jared's office will be, um, the one, um, reporting. Okay? All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good night. And don't forget, the Saturday is like Mariner Day. Come and join us. Eleven o'clock parade. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and everybody. Thank you so much.
Mr. Kamali, can you, uh, text our, our legal to let, let them know that we're heading towards closed session and, and?
Hmm, and I.